Chongor ranen janor rodojen rongolalem. Em ranu kien kalalem. Ilo ranen kielakuan nadiyalaio an island kien anarumajin majel. Ilo mayenganin kien kajuan, ilo an iayin. Keduromalalemuk war dorewan reinin. Kerba mayengan, kerbalanwana reinin. Em lajarakewin. Aitem dambo chow nechikirngan kuelo. Aitem dambaro rokolem nadiyalaio. Aitem chillu, kuepen chunulugu. Yumen aitem chawin eber ran chillu. An yangol chilljino constitutional regulations patchuan. Aitem okin kemen e nanjan president walaale kien kaproriwan cabinet. Aitem okin kalalem. Kedchalaegan mawizin. Kedchalaeg yumen aitem chawin. Aitem chilljino kachetengan muak. Aitem chillimyon, cherbalagu, rachangrelo. Eber cherlgu yumen aitem chawin. Reporten standing committee gua chelog izin, doa item chawin, eber cherlgu yumen aitem chawin. Imparainot reporten special committee wan nadiyal, eber cherlgu yumen aitem chawin. Aitem chongol ed bill klamba. Yumen first, second, kap third, edo ed chelok. Palmenin kanono. Chongol yon aitem resolution klamba. Ilo kanono chon kanono ro, eber chelok, chonomro. Aitem chongorobilgan pagemana kedchalaeg yumen aitem chawin. Aitem chongol chillu resolution gan pagemada kapero chelok. Em aitem chongolemen e petition. Communication kapcherbal, cherbal kapenana gochit. Yawa eber communication damba chillulamen eber epiano. Report jan generalan tijembarrodojen rongolamen. Kap communication damba chillulalem. An ubi registration schedule. An kalakarien. Enrayo, reportan enray. Yawe. Ega ne e na cherbalan nadiyala reinin, an kalakarien lajarakewin. Ilo yenin e matano chichowt minute nadiya, matano chillimyon chongol. Kedyangekeduradan e speaker. Honorable speaker wase kikirngan chino. Im tarana chino nyujin lelo. Kan chikin bebe udayan anarumajin majel. Traychowt menin nakemel melot. Impozak main nadiyala. Perchunalen eber visa beni bije. Ilo chongoranim ranen eber imtalem parainot entie. Par yengeje. Kamorala bechama iliza. Pari beni bijay kien. Kap bijay kuelakuan nadiyala janjanjan. Nala kamoralegan entie CEO. Olepa. Oleba. Romerijap entie tepal mede charamanan kum. Kachurujabrojane entie. Kan cherbalguru man. Yawa ino non honorol minister Jess Casper Jr. Imparainot Madam Secretary wale. Brenda Alec. Im tabirio wale eee. Andar yelman. Im kichimen. Ilo emociai. Ministry on Culture and Internal Affairs. Ilo charamanan wajel, alabdada Management on Visa Beni. Charamanan yoinagailan kum. Imkumalale kedchon DJI. Thank God it's Friday, chon weekend special. Imkumalabainaman. Chidi kewalangan eber control main studio. Chion eber do kiu. Imkeduradan chion nadiyala. Chia kewalawat. Kuelawin nadiyala chupugun reinin ed palokiu ilo chongolawan ro minute. Reinin ed palayre. Janorod chongorran rodojen rongolalem, ranu kien kalalem. Ilo regulations in patchuan. In rodojen rongolalem. Kaudizawalip. Kamolalanigigun chon ranaman, mehurumezmehur. Em yojimmaron chudagipendrolem. Kachidok charamanan wana reinin. Keparjonalen kaudizim yaweyenganawalip armajin majel. Kaudizawalip. Madam President. Memberin and Cabinet, Mr. Vice Speaker, Chairman Rein, Senator Rein. Irojio, chairman gani mweniroj. Irojijit. Honorio. Armajin majel. Em. Chon kaudiziongan iroyroaryai lingin. Najroin. Beroin council. Tudarroary ilo kamungparainot, wale berangin. Yawe kedyangat olalajut. Ilo edjantana wale. Imkedyangat pergiy ilo. Aitem dambaro. Ilo kaudizmaron. Klut. Chujimleto rolgol wana reinin.
President Hildasi haini.
Vice Speaker, yaweyenganawalip ilo chupugunin reinin.
Minister Kalani kanego.
Kamolalanilu chupugun reinin, yaweyenganawalip, kaudizowalip, vice speaker.
Minister Premri lakjon.
Yaweyalakin, vice speaker.
Minister Hilton Cantal.
Kamolalani igigun chon ranamen. Speaker, daw chon morning, ngai.
Minister Wisely Chagrayat.
Vice Speaker, yaweyalip.
Minister David Paul. Minister Tony Muller.
Yaweyalip, Speaker ngai.
Minister Otakizino. Minister Gerald M. Zakius.
Kamolal jamirinam gijun prilawon ranaman. Yaweyenganawalip, ngai, Mr. Speaker.
Minister Jess Casper Jr.
Morninganawalip, ngai, Mr. Speaker.
Minister Thomas Haini. Vice Speaker Isaac Chagrayat.
Yaweylangin, ngai, Speaker. Mul.
Senator Wolbaraini.
Yawem kaudizowt kemen, ngai, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Jack Adin.
Kile kaudizion kamolal ebancamolongan new rukamanaman. Yaweyenganawalip, ngai, Mr. Speaker.
Senator David Kramer.
Yaweyenganawalip, ngai, Speaker.
Senator Dennis Momotaro.
Kaudizanis, kaudizim yaweyalip, ngai, Speaker.
Senator David Tani tok.
Yawem kamolal jamirijilak, ngai, Speaker.
Senator Steven Phillips. Senator Bruce Breamon. Senator Wallace Peter. Senator Joe Pejang. Senator Daisy Alec Momotaro.
Kamolalanigigun chun rujilagan ranaman, ngai, Mr. Speaker. Yaweylangin.
Senator David Kadwa. Senator Roshi Yamamura.
Ngai, Speaker.
Senator Rile Kildi Kadwa.
Kamolalani krim kaudizowalip, ngai, Speaker.
Senator Tony Aijia.
Ngai.
Senator Sunny Milne.
Morningawalip, ngai.
Senator Mike Alfredi. Senator Bruce Chigaloyak. Senator Murray Milne.
Kile irojimantata, yaweyalip, ngai, Mr. Speaker.
Senator KZH Not. Senator Kudlang Kadwa.
Yarowalip, ngai.
Speaker wase.
Keparjonalen kaudizawalip. Em madam klut. Yorjedoro rariyelondo galigun rolgolu. Senator David Kadwa. Dianjigurugutuk. Eberainot borro arkajidigare excuse reinin. Senator Joe Pejang ngai, ovaile not. Senator KZH Not ed pero di lo nanginmits. Eberainot chedoro arkajidigare rumutuk. Senator Bruce Breamon arkajidok ngai marong rumutuk chill. Yawekan melalegin ragel madam klut chujimleto makapte edin rolgol.
Mr. Speaker, eworrochilu present. Chimijon absent, imchilu excuse.
Namem janung. Imperkoro man nadiyala reinin. Kedyangajigun malawatum kamani kuelakuan wale. Kedyangat tabutabulajut, kedyangat lo aitem dampatchilu. Kuepen chiono. Em bijan e jlele ranu kien kajilu. Ilo sezenin. Em ngayimmarong kilegu ilo kaudiz, Mr. Vice Speaker, lawat. Flon.
Motada, Mr. Speaker, motajanal kilimagetok. Aitem chillu. Inan kubaojipam. Kologaro tumor. Klearon, alabdada irojiro. Kedyangaligigun bebein, kue, Mr. Speaker, Madam President. Minister Rein kap Senator Rein rodejilu chigun bebein. Alabdada ngan olip armajin majel. Ro ijogu chaberut. Yumen aitem chillu e jlele. Ran chillu. Em itama gamijan periman medyan ruwele wale. Arbaradan ilo email. Emailan ngay chalokoku bawar chaberut. Yewi kamana bebein nadiyala yenin pugwain mwenin.
Kamol, Mr. Speaker, keparjonalen pergulawan kaudizyo. Ah, Mr. Speaker, motajanal tribeberin matarro kuepen chuneling. Gnan kolokot. Aue. Kachitak ngai. Immarong urwut. Ruwemen kachimwen. Igijen belalekanai aue ilo chonamne. Kien kajuan, ijane ijba. Chigun lotakain lo aiye. Impelin. Ebriagar. Kachibdukuneman, mokajagar pa, ebuk. Ed strikeout ijane, chigun lotakain lo aiye, bajar, chigun lotakilu aiye. Chigun beban lotakain ilo aiye ijogen petne. Em ijane kien karro igijen bebanajit. Kalakilu ajit. Yawe ijane jlele pay, paysit. Imn strikeout nanen paysit, imligut nanen faceit. Babelin menio. Elbagalabnagare rein, bapeide ijgen bapeisit. Bagar kachimwe baganai, Mr. Speaker, ilo kaudiz. Ngai maronaj kachimwe, motajanal. Cholok paysit, imligutta? Cholok paysit. Imligut paysit. Imcholok chigun lotak. Imligut. Chig, be, chig, ah, be, chigun bewain lotak. Aligar, aligar kachimwe nam kien kajuan, kachimwe kien karro berbipidim. Ya ijba, meri, meri ijba paysit. Pay, way, shit. Ak meni face, ev, shit. Peling kanagalugun lamnagawa, peide rein ijgen bapeisit kata. Kamol, Mr. Speaker. Ele, ele. Imjigamimen nothi, pujen karilawe. Jen karilawe. Ayamaningagebar risit. Ele. Yaweman klugajin nothi. Em ngay, emmanipen. Nadiyala, jeneb kokubawakin, nan senatorne jen. Namu. Em na turidi anut mininkachimwe. Nanaro wangoon malawatum alabwai. Ah, jenelme. Majimjan. Vice Speaker kamani mojinangan arbri. Imujsekente. Ilo ankubalo kokubawakin. Yaw mojinono iman. Royendrin alamnak, be kedyangan bek jenelme ilo ankachimwe chujimbahe. En jon. Namem jan elle. Jenelme ilo ankokubawak. Kedyangat olalojutmak ilo edjantana kedyang bello aitem damba hemen. Nanjan President. Imminisero. Em motajanalanyo nyuganup. Chedoro rovaile, welcome back Senator Murray Milne. Em ilo kaudizyo jismunano. Be presidentaru japerbar chupugun reinin, nanaleto kenanawan ilo chupugun reinin gan. Nadiyala in kap armajin majel. Madam President ilo kaudiz chujimwan malawat.
Kamol, kamol Speaker, kamolaligigun chon ranaman. Perudalu awun kaudizim kilewar ilo chigun bebein nan armajinailin kien. Kilemanidio. Chairman an councilani roj, irojimle rojro, parainot honorio ilo mwenin. Irojimle rojro ilo talagin majelini. Ilu majroin, rojro aylingin. Parainot ro ibalagin agiliginailin kien. Kaudiz. Wale ilo chupugunin. Parainot kile. Rgagiro, krenrgagiro. Kotakcherbalginan armajinailin kien. Chen yenanganin kamolalir. Kileuk Speaker, em rein matarol chigun bebein, reinwan cabinet, parainot. Senator Rein chen kajuyo islandku ibalagin. Majelit. Kile rojijidilo dayir, irojro, parainot. Councilo mayor, councilo, parainot armajinaur. Kamolal wey marong maingir ilo chigun bebein nan armajin majel. Speaker echalok lukunana la figure kanan pugulu chupugunin reinin. Ignanota acknowledge. Annual reportanemotada, ar summit, nan nadiyala in chen epa. Kamolole channelmanijaywani epa kenan. On top of cherbalginan marong summiti. Reportinani ilo wigini mantada ilo kuelawinani nadiyala ilo iyehin. Chon reporto eganipiriro ridi. Langai. Kedyane ilingri eganijleto, kelenkmelalegin cherbalgu epa kmani. Emi gnanlela chon nanin navaram kamolol epa genan cherbalinaman. Emichay ilo terainot, rejangaya wale ben. Tudarro ankachuyo ministrigo, parainot esoyigo anken. Baren parainot lulu ryagi reporto, ayreanol reportogo. Reyabujitsamit akaranankagien. Em ekarberunidogo, bichen marong worianalingeri. Lali cherbalgora pchigirilo ani chamololok. Parainot toyangana lalapajadeo meyene idok. Per roren lulu ryagi akarananaiwigo. Renparainot marong melalega gi. Ilu air paratabale cherbalginan kajuyo agency ginan kien. Em aparchunalen ilo yenin ilu naaurgo puenidog reporto. Imjech reyangawalepe renlulu ryagi reporto ginan airidok pukajujeningeri. Yawe menuriin nan kagewin meyodmenin, garkanan pugilangdakilu chupugunin reinin, ngai Speaker. Kamolganamidog chilagagien.
Kamolata, Madam President. Ilo terain ed palokot. Yininan ministero, ngayri kiluyukiu, ministeran foreign affairs and trade. Minister kanego.
Kamol, Mr. Speaker, motajanal bugchirkuwari ilo. Yan yeninan President kap cabinet, gnan. Keparjonalen kakel, awun kilem kaudizal. Nganyuk Speaker, Vice Speaker. Her Excellency President Haini. Wale ben ruwelegrin matarol chigun bebein, newdejana armajin majel. Irojimle rojroar. Chairmano kap Vice Chairmano, imwale memberan councilo virojugo bawoner. Imwale irojimle rojroar ilo an majelini, imtuligin majelin. Chon kilejinalangan. Irojimle rojro arjen ilo majroin. Alabdada leroyan. Brigin capital chamberin nan armajin majelit marong perion. Inan kile. Wale pergagim, krenrgagiro, parainot ilo air. Kotak kajujilo charwair. Em kile. Wale mayor, council. Chon kilejinalangan mayorwaring aylingin, councilo. Imwale ben armajin majel. Alabdada armajiro me. Kyeroj chijidilo dayir ilo aylingin. Kile wale ilo chunuturoron, kilem kaudiz. Mr. Speaker ilogar. Sezenolok. Charkonoogan comebackel. Elengkar isugu rarwalok. Em concerngu aga. Kachidokoan, elengriyandruwelegrin igijen. Tatbenefetoku me rumajarro. Matarim nugurim, chuguchu mamana kilo Amerika. Red ya iuni akaran benefitagin ragel, kapweyweinagin. Red bugchigir ilo comebackagin agel, jismewiriluan. Mr. Speaker, erjinojen. Othoba yo mantak, nan. Eni paralinkanerit perodok. Em jan chino kamanjarbalin community outreach programo. Eno dakar. Kaj, ah, plan em kalekar nganjigun bebein. Menenin pugukchirik report. Ah, igijen community outreach programoin ministerio ijeroji. Yumen telewan Ambassador Charles Paul. Em wale ben rejerbarolo embassywaring ilo Washington DC. Imparainot councilo toku. Ilo ion Amerika. Mr. Speaker. Inijilato god chirigin, debirigin detailgin. Angan proarim menenin lingeri, menenin shere reportin ilo chiji. Em legun aur, per outreach programoin impugchigun. Fantingin me harcherbalangan outreach programoin eduto ilo yumen per comebackangan. Kien kajuan, koalok tatbenefetoku rumajarro eligible, eligible ngani. Im marong pugi ilo air chuguchu mamana kilo Amerika. Kien karro edengan otheresi challenges guaga, apenggo. Em rumajarro regioni ilo Amerika. Kien kajilu edenganan train rejerwali ilo ministerio. Etalangan kajuyo puganugu. City, county, kap state level. Ilo kajuyo stategin. Imyerttabari kap state warit planin etalawatani. Nan koalok wunkitch. Edakidijam ber Amerika. Em tagojit marong koalobay ngani, periberi. Ah, yon aga. Lewan comebackin, me kienagin ro, imyair. RM chino charwari. Mr. Speaker, ilo othoba November 3 jmbain yo chamololok. Stategin, emjan. Ah, emyer marong tabari, mejep. Emnot, padab, emarong emin state aga, elengelok. Jen. Ah, chongol puganugu. Eber an lengrumajelie. Kien kajuan ejarakanso. Kien karro jawai. Kien kajilu, state of waiw. Kien kemen, state of Texas. Im kien kalalem, state of oloama. Mr. Speaker. Ilo outreach programoin. Imikamanjin. Katabar gin, nanar lelok. Melalego. Imparainot bug melalego, chen rumajarro retjowi, aga runugurum matarretjowi ilo Amerika. Yawan titel melalegin, mi ban. Leto, nemba. Pe berigi. Elvalen melalege. Ayganan kalekar odagui. Reportin available, nanar marong kajeredi. Eleng. Janma eleng isugu, imrumajarin, ralilingdak. Chen kajuyo puganagin kenono wagi. Igijen kien kajuan is passport ilo arkakeli. Em choni incharwal. Eno dakar bar report motaloke. Aur bug kajujin chino kolmalok janwagi.
... Army General, General, Army General. Mr. Speaker, Supreme Court of Justice, we have brought in the President of the Portfolio of the United States. Laleh, he has been praying for years, he is very proud. The report is, the report is called "The Supreme Court of Justice" to the people of China. I have heard that the people who have heard the report have told us that they are electronically registered members. I have heard that Chinese shipping and Mr. Speaker, Portfolio in the shipping, NTA, Port Authority, Air Model, COVA, OBJ, RN, Ministry of, of the TNC. The Chinese shipping, shipping management is the only thing that provides services to the Army General. The services are provided on a quarterly basis with a mandate. They have heard that if you want to move the Air Model, you can go there and ask the President to help you. Like, they will do it. And then, when the court is open, they will tell you if you want to move. They will tell you if you want to move. When the court is open, they will tell you if you want to move. Then, when the government is there, they will tell you that the COVA grew and grew up there. The Air Model is there. But when the government services are there, they will tell you that you can move. You will, you will, you will. They will tell you that you can move to the Army General. Then, if you want to move, you can go there. They will spend Christmas there. The Air Model, sir, it is a big one, it is a big one. It is a big one. The report is, it is a big one. They will tell you that the FBI is managing the problem. They will do it. And when the service is there, they will tell you how to manage it. Maybe, they will move the COVA, maybe, the GM, General Manager, COVA, maybe, Management, maybe. They will tell you how to manage the schedule. If you want to move, you can go there. They will tell you when the court is open. Make sure that you can go there. The COVA is there. The Air Model designated is there. The Chinese, maybe, the Air Model, Chinese shipping, maybe, they will tell you if you want to move or not. Maybe, they will tell you the official service. They will tell you that you can go there. Maybe, they will tell you that you can go there. Mr. Speaker, they have heard the report of shipping. Maybe, they will tell you if you want to move. Maybe, they will tell you electronically. Maybe, they will copy or they will copy. Here, the Air Model, maybe, the Port Authority. The Port Authority, maybe, the film director, Thomas Morrison, who has heard the port member of the Port Authority. Maybe, the project is ready. Yes, they have heard. The airport rehabilitation project, maybe, they have repaired the surface and landing strip. They will go there for a certain amount of years. Maybe, they will go there up to standard and standard FA. Maybe, the project is ready. Maybe, they are ready. They continue, continue on. Maybe, they will tell you that they will move the air to the lab. They will do it. When the court expects the complete project within the next few months. Here, they have heard the terminal. They have heard the timeline. Maybe, the middle, maybe, the end. Here, they have heard that you can move. The International Terminal. They have funded the end. Currently, they have done a temporary terminal. Maybe, they have moved the tear down existing terminal and built the international terminal. Maybe, they have moved the temporary terminal by the end. Maybe, they will build the terminal. Maybe, the Port Authority has managed the project, maybe, the project. Marshall Island Maritime Infrastructure Project. The project will be made by what, Chalut, Imano. He will make a marker there. There. COVA will move there. They will move there. The project will be moved. Maybe, they will build a project. When they will move, they will engage the World Bank and make a decision. Maybe, they have completed the project. Maybe, they have completed the end. Maybe, they have done it. Maybe, they have heard the report of the Port Authority. Maybe, they will do it. Maybe, the project is complete. Maybe, the Fencing Round Teleport, maybe, Army Corps of Engineers. Maybe, they have funded. Maybe, they will move the Teleport. Here, they have heard the report of the Port Authority. The Port Authority has heard the NTA. The NTA, maybe, they will allocate the 20 million to the cabinet to upgrade the outer island. Maybe, 3G, 4G. Maybe, the government services there. Maybe, our neighboring islands. Maybe, they have allocated 20 million to the US. Maybe, they have banned the air between Guam and Brazil. Maybe, they will move the project. Maybe, they will move the project. Maybe, they will move the COVA. The report, here, the Air Model. Maybe, they have stated on Madam President, they have heard the ball. The ball, maybe, the ball, maybe, they have done it. Yes. The ball, maybe, they have done it. January 2026. Maybe, they have heard Minister of Finance, Camille Le Rana, who has heard one of the ball. The Air Model or Taiwan, maybe, maybe, the COVA or see Taiwan and make a decision. Maybe, they have heard the concession of the law. Maybe, they have heard the interest. Interest. Speaker, maybe, maybe, they have heard. Move.
Move.
Move. Maybe, they have heard that the Air Model and Air Model is registered. The Air Model, Madam Assistant, or Madam Kalayi on a monthly basis. Maybe, they have heard that you can move the Air Model. Maybe, they have heard that you can move. Madam Kalayi. Maybe, they have heard the FSI is there. Maybe, the Air Model is there. Maybe, they have heard the one. Maybe, they have heard the upper branch. They will do it. The Air Model, maybe, they have heard that the Minister of Finance has heard that the COVA will move. Maybe, they will move Christmas. Maybe, they have heard that the COVA will move. Maybe, they will move Christmas. Maybe, they have heard the report of the Air Model. Maybe, they have heard the TNC. Maybe, they have heard that the COVA is there. Maybe, they have heard that the COVA is there. Maybe, they have heard that the safety measureable is there. Make sure that the government is there. Maybe, they have heard that the COVA is there. Maybe, they have heard that OBJ tests and the COVA and the Air Model depend Starlink. Maybe, they have heard that the Army General is there. Maybe, they have heard that Starlink is there. Maybe, they have heard that the President has heard that the COVA is there. Maybe, they have heard that you can move. Maybe, the Speaker has heard the report of the COVA. Maybe, they have heard electronic copy. Maybe, they have heard that the Ministry of DNC and Information Technology. Maybe, they have heard that the QNA is there. Maybe, they have heard that the clarification of Senator Rain. Maybe, they have heard that the clarifying is there. Maybe, they have heard that the Speaker move. They have heard.
...
Kogijen, lojit, iminigay. Eo, mtekanan, pujen, pruvendi, ente, ploplok, choraini, na, nanganmijigay, ena, ajiri, ngan, kijujwalay. Um, i, parrelalal, parkachidigay, uh, chijinubuina, major, kanagana, matak, ngan, uh, purpose kojet. Eh, eh, marongke, chelideden, uh, projectne, armen, ngay, yengre, tokia, airportne, terminal, kani, gichien, polen, fundinga, uh, eden, airpa, matching, one, um, ngan, one, one, malak, programna, projectne. Eo, wak, menuyuk, kachidugane, ngay, eh, banchelidem, kayinney, owayan, eje, managa, uh, chedum, kana, chen, chen, ngan, post authority, no, dage, chen, ngan, air, uh, stand by, ngan, we, we, ngay, at, part, menuyuket. Um, kachidugay, ujwan, eh, uh, gichien, eden, cos, ngan, gichien, uh, menuyukar, Louis, innee, gichien, uh, National Socio, Socio, Socioeconomic Summitne, uh, co-arrangement, chen, ministerin, eh, eden, elang cos, ngan, pugodon, armirin, rejidujan, outer, elang, uh, siyo, loterin, me, yen, koyelok. Ngay, marong, or, chirik, chirik, reporto, ngan, keni, men, ngan, chedegos, ne, chireloka, uh, chjerballoan. Um, ewjuwan, eh, chuniair, eh, uh, kachidugui, polen, uh, wayan, kogujungujung, eh, uh, scholarshipne, aryan. Um, komolol, ministerin, nikel, Gerald Sagyasken, Amprokar, Kono, ngan, chunian, apelken, korar, chen, narong, uh, polen, approve, uh, rotifore, uh, we, we, ujut. Uh, kiyo, chibong, uh, par, la, ngaju, chun, parujul, eh, majil, luwain, eh, chuparak, masters. Eh, mi, chepchala, edag, charge, kalay, uh, rujulun, we, chuparak, masters. Um, scholarship, pro, programpe, eh, lu, payne, chibangay, uh, buroma, jige, luwaini, kualwa, na, pono, no, ngan, edag, eh, rajabap, approve, ngan, spring breakin, uh, spring, uh, semester. Um, ngay, emailal, uh, kachidugay, ngan, ew, tollo, ngan, me. Imunon, eh, chijidiben, im, kualak, unrein, um, unin, payne, manar, ujjerbal, ben, chibang, luwain. No, dage, chun, rujiparak, eh, chepchep, rujiparak, uh, chun, eh, chibang, kich, iljumjagala, kari, gichien, uh, book, masters, men, menuyuk, encourage, kijuj, armijin, arin, eh, ngay, ngalpta, ajiri, ngan, iljumjagala. Ngan, kogajurun, build up, island, kain, arakan, elang, kibailu, be. Eo, Mr. Speaker, kulugune, mol, lalaguy, ne.
Molot, molot, ala, Mr. Senator. Ina, kiloy, kiyo, Senator, TZ, Ali, Momotaro. Oh, kataro, chiri, baji, dalalok, ngan, poini, nuwak. Minister Pol.
Mol, Mr. Speaker, jawu, kebku, moni, ngan, olip, lawi, ngan, olip, armijin, majel, kiloy, olip, rurian, clear, kaudi, janik, iman, tara. Mr. Speaker, ngan, wot, uwa, kachiduguan, Senator. Philip, ngan, summitne, eh, mi, chale, collective responsibility, agen, eh, illet, budget, money, nila, tokot, payn, clear. Total, budgetne, major, budget, uh, rubukijimyon, mol, taujin. Nam pain, participation, neighboring island, uh, radimyon, ro, armirijutok. Eh, me, bello, kemjan, cabinet, kowe, pane, eh, me, bello, payet, eh, mi, bajak, eh, ne, execute. Come on, Mr. Speaker.
Come on, inga, chalan, armijin, koyelen, ngan, Minister Pol, kemjan, chibaru, chigurud, lojigin, BB. Aylo, terin, eh, baror, uh, we, ina, kiloy, kiyo, Minister, kaneko.
Come on, uh, Mr. Speaker, ngan, uwa, otta, kachiduguan, Senator Philip, gichien, uh, Siwal. Uh, elang, elang, funding, go, mir, kemjan, kara, identify, mir, bello, finance, em, chikatar, ane, roll outi, uh, jerbalin. Em, par, eh, no, uh, loterin, war, per, minister, ngan, finance, kuar, bar, reporti, lotigin, BB. Em, chen, oh, kana, eh, rumujut, roll out, eh, no, that, I would, jerbalip, in World Bank, and projectin, alap, eh, chep, project, chiririg, alap, projectin. Em, menuyuk, comment, termi, mi, barchirik, eh, idwar, kajim, negoji, di, galay, we, 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 ujut, eh, no, than, uh, ngewadi, buy, uh, right, World Bank, eh, uh, mandate, per, pugair, material. Em, ralap, pota, material, yen, Dubai, ngan, I buy, eh, lu, lap, cosin. Elba, lap, um, mol, kela, chen, ini, juduk, uh, one, eh, no, material, eh, eh, marong, ke, back, timatanin, one, eden, cosin, arutok. Eh, mi, matan, menuyukin, me, uh, ro, tollo, giri, redjerbal, ujut, loterin. Gichien, scholarship, uh, Mr. Speaker, aganan, uh, eh, juduk, minister, uh, education, ilan, uh, bo, la, dayan, angay, kualak, uh, dage, uh, we, we, in, scholarship, ujut, mir, eh, available. Minister, uh, foreign affairs, ilo, terin, eh, bayan, elang, scholarship, go, rebelok. Em, chen, yen, ngan, yen, right, kapalala, ingan, uh, kijuj, roren, majil, alap, ta, ajiri, roren, ujut, go, roren, juduk, limoyir. Em, ay, pangan, uh, Senatorin, mata, kali, inga, mata, chen, ailing, ingay, marong, parchil, ngan, tok, lu, koin, uh, rain, me, rain, melal, uh. Parano, romer, jero, ngajaki, koyelokin, chibong, ngan, rainin, ngarim, manono, ngan, lali, ta, scholarship, opportunity, ujut. Scholarship, go, lo, minister, uh, foreign affairs, uh, eh, bayan, elang, eh, eden, olip, scholarship, gain, right, fully funded. Em, ah, aganan, paj, kali, kar, men, eh, elang, bintirian, rujugur, right, per, ilo, uh, scholarship, gain, scholarship, be, nijap, kel, chen, eh, bayan, toan, book, chigin, chika, molol, ruar, jerbali, jerbal, gain, bayan, marong, tabarak, scholarship, opportunity, gain, ngan, rujugur, in, me, je. Eo, come on, Mr. Speaker.
Molot, uh, Mr. Minister, ina, kiloy, kiyo, minister, uh, chigin, jalal, uh, chigin, jalal, uh, chigin, jalal, uh.
Come on, uh, Mr. Speaker, gan, dage, chirigar, ruian, ngan, pokonar, ruilo, kachidug, arvalingdak, em, ngay, manipam, gan, melime, inay, one, malak, dem. Par, pokonag, gan, kachidukko, chetra, one, maandak, ilo, uh, we, gin, koyelawin, gichien, jerbalin, jalal, uh. Wadada, komolol, chemerilang, gan, raini, kile, yuken, ubijana, Mr. Speaker, aganan, Mr. Vice Speaker, Madam President, Rainwan Cabinet, Rainwan, Nidijalay, Irojeruar, ilo, may, mayir. Em, Honore, Irojeru, jar, belagun, island, kain, gab, iligun, island, kain, rukag, Iro, chemer, em, chinet, ilo, gili, jagu, kachiju. Olip, rumajal, kap, komolol, Irojeruar, ilo, island, kain, gan, melime, ngan, ay, right, per, em, jerbalijin, em, kommani, mayuri, penro, ilo, chalap, aga.
Mr. Speaker, gichien, otta, kachidug, uh, scholarship, ilam, juwan, lajar, iman, meja. Gan, kar, chongan, scholarship, uh, ubijana, scholarship, eh, lulur, jagi, ngan, jerbalin, scholarship, ilo, spring, uh, ilo, kuadain, uh, ilo, springin. Em, elang, lemog, ru, scholarship. Em, ngay, lalay, liste, em, ngay, marong, antoan, ngalak, armijin, konono, ga. Em, gan, gach, chep, bayu, leto, kaya, di, la, anjin, ina, imunon, uh, konono, ipen, rugelawin, chen, majero, eh, no, tam, uh, amro, gar, konono, gan, kachiduguan, ichaga, we, we, ino, di, lo, ran, ngalak. Gan, um, gan, bar, icha, edag, eh, kachidugay, edag, eh, tar, chen, marong, mu, ep. Ilam, guun, ujji, angay, ijma, armijin, ich, konono, ga, uh, aid, ngay, na, ich, kanan, bar, pok, guun, ujut, in scholarship, par, edag, eh, gan, gey, na, likar. Gan, gey, ilam, juwan, armit, eh, me, one, maandak, ilo, jalal, uh, agu, ujra, lalok, uh, par, polen, chay, iligun, konono, ga. Angay, konono, kangan, kagaruwi, ina, konono, ipen, ipen, uh, Senatorin, gan, kachidugay, na. Em, rochet, me, elang, ngay, kachidug, chun, eh, lajar, ngan, rain, har, dal, scholarship, ngan, ir, romer, ar, rumujalok, uh, romer, ar, jua, ep, kabun, ujut. Gichien, kar, chico, kachidukko, rar, valingdak, gichien, ke, kel, uh, lulur, jagi, jerbal, uh, gichien, ke, man, malok, chigin, jalal, uh, uh, ilo, island, uh. Yunan, kualan, ngan, Vice Speaker, yan, wot, kachidukkoan, gan, gar, monchugul, uh, ilo, air, uh, majel, kai, ilo, air, uh, komon, ru, renovation, lo, ye, na, ro, taujin, romul, chilu. Gichien, majel, kemjan, chiri, lal, olip, uh, we, we, ngan, kolektu, uh, monchugul, yo, dage, eh, jaywi, juduk, melime, uh, ngan, har, one, maandak, dem, kommani, we, we, in, ochen, marong, kommani, alap, ta, da, ngay, chen, ik, jerbal, chen, gay, cha, barwet, uh, yo, mun, ujjin, chem, jar, air, ipen, Amerga, gan, kar, ko, ngan, kajabar, uh, ngay, chidilal, uh, monchugul, adig, rire, ren, marong, per, im, chugul, ilo, air, ilo, chalap, ka, abang. Uh, jalagay, ekadlang, kachiduk, uh, ligiyep, kabun, olap, ich, kataro, the reporter, uh, chen, Assistant Commissioner, uh, eh, lulur, jagi, jerbal, giran, ekkal, em, maintenance, gan, monchugul, uh. Gichien, kachidugay, uh, dage, uh, Chairman, Momotaro, Dennis Momotaro, yunan, kualan, ngan, Nidijalay, ngan, aid, health, nutrition, eh, bello, crock, ilam, ne, anjin, chugul, ga. Em, inay, one, maandak, dem, par, kachiduk, uh, melal, uh, gichien, uh, kar, kachiduguan, Chairman, of Senator David Kramer, gichien, National Training Council. Ngay, chen, mi, mi, lal, pachidu, em, jart, karal, chen, uh, ngan, National Training Council, ngan, lulur, jagi, jerbal, uh. Chen, gey, uh, kajeruar, edal, ingan, Ministry, uh, yunan, report, ingan, uh, Nidijalay, uh, armijin, island, kain, President Cabinet. Ke, kemjan, chiri, lal, chibukui, rali, dage, personal action, kap, counter, uh, ko, ngan, kodak, em, kommani, bar, armijer, air, dat, uh, one, air, ren, marong, tabar, minimum wage, kap, kajim, yalak, one, ay, rujal, bar, rochet. Olip, in, counter, uh, kain, uh, rar, dage, personal action, game, chen, ineo, rar, dage, ngan, gi, kemjan, chiri, lal, rujut, em, chit, kajaram, uh, em, komolol, la, armijerin, gan, gey, jay, pok, we, we, ay, jip, chep, par, kachidug, be, uh, par, par, pok, ujok, one, air. Ngan, kader, la, ngaj, jerbalin, jalal, uh, come on, Mr. Speaker.
Molot, ala, Mr. Minister. Ilo, terin, giyo, uh, chay, ina, kiloy, uh, Chair, President, uh, Senator, uh, Daisy, Ali, Momotaro.
Come on, Mr. Speaker. Wata, chana, ina, one, maandak, um, potuk. Kachidugal, ilo, muligar, one, maandak, dem, dan, kachidug, be, meditera, gan, an, kalo, pay, armijin, island, uh, ran, jalagay, kemjan, lulur, jagi. Yunan, kogelaw, um, kaudi, ja, uh, komolol, chemerilang, uh, chun, ri, lagan, ran, amman. Em, kan, one, agay, uh, an, em, i, par, par, ino, wot, kile, em, kaudi, ragi, ruar, em, kri, ragi, ruichin, ilo, olip, gili, jagu. Em, kile, Madam President, Aine, and First Gentleman, Kitchiner, kile, uh, Mr. Speaker, Vice Speaker, Rokar, Yaramiro, olip, Member, Cabinet, dey, uh, Rokar, Yarayir, Senator, Rain. Em, Rokar, Yaramang. Chun, uh, kile, ngan, Chairman, Layan, Ika, Buwa, uh, olip, Iroyer, um, leroy, uh, kap, uner, ilo, moy, um, Iroj, em, olip, Iroyer, uh, an, island, kain, idog, och, abar, yow. Speaker, kile, em, kaudi, ingan, Iroyer, um, leroy, uh, air, si, ah, ich, iyidie, marong, konono, ilo, tai, uh, em, olip, armir, Iroyer, em, olip, in, armijin, chalu. Par, ino, wot, kile, olip, in, armijin, majel, ilo, majel, in, mi, iligun, majel, in. Speaker, inay, kar, tan, chuan, uh, kachidug, man, wata, pay, ghar, ke, back, minister, minister, tollo, ngan, kachidug, gichien, im, monchugul, uh, ilo, chalu, yu, mde, ghar, chiri, lal, counter, uh, air. Yunan, komolol, minister, uh, former minister, Pejang, payar, lulur, jagi, ayar, uh, gan, an, pok, gil, ngan, tak, uh, pay. Kemjan, ghar, chiri, lal, counter, uh, air, ke, la, da, armijo, construction, company, uh, meran, eh, kar, tan, jerbal, ya, rar, pok, yarak. Em, kar, kachidug, uh, uh, in, ay, yunan, kommani, chuan, uh, kachalan, ngan, armijin, chalu, yu, gige, uh, gichien, uh, rayo, ina, jadal, armijer, uh, ilo, ran, in, manre, ran, in, manre, chung, chilu, ran, em, na, chep, la, uh, ilo, manre, in, juwan, ina, ran, idak, ran, in, air, per, di, jan. Uh, yunan, bar, chiri, gichien, uh, and, wot, point of information, ngan, kachidug, uh, uh, Senator, uh, jen, island, in, Stephen Philip. Gichien, scholarship, and, wot, juwan, Member, Board, uh, scholarship. Em, iligun, wata, run, kachidug, uh, ayar, tak, chel, lal, jerbal, run, rik, kalo, pay, ran, jan, marong, leto, oblig, di, jan, uh, pay, were, requirement, uh, em, ilo, uh, rules and procedure, uh, yunan, uh, scholarship, uh, scholarship, uh, ngay, chep, un, kibiren, copan, oblig, di, jan, uh, and, wot, requirement, uh, supporting, tag, men, create, olip, men, gini, gey, kemi, kachidug, bar, chab, leto, pay, kujong, ta, lem, ke, back, rubukui, oblig, di, jan. Em, kar, ngan, melal, uh, uh, rar, chab, leto, pay, eh, chep, un, kibiren. Em, em, er, kamin, ujig, uh, la, ku, pen, rujugul, in, pay, marong, uh, provide, di, lal, uh, uwa, uan, ngan, eh, we, in, jalay. Em, itama, kemjan, rujugul, in, in, melal, uh, wudur, in, em, part, chuan, island, Mr. Speaker, come on.
Come on, ala, Madam Senator. Chay, kiloy, kiyo, uh, Senator, uh, dage, chen, molol, Senator Bruce, Liman.
Come on, dem, kaudi, joke, Under, Speaker, kaudi, joke, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker, uh, Rokar, Yaraviro, yunan, kaudi, come, di. Uh, President, inay, yunan, kile, uh, First Gentleman, uh, Minister, Rain, Rokar, Yarayir, yunan, kile, come, uh, uh, Senator, Rain, yunan, kuba, lal, kipen, Senator, uh, chid, uh, jan, chal, uh, jan, kile, uh, Rokar, Yarad. Irojeru, ble, Irojeru, uh, ilo, majel, in, um, iligun, majel, in. Chairman, Layan, Ika, Irojeru, leroy, kap, uner, ilo, uh, uh, Iroj, im, olip, olip, ru, right, chibang, Irojeru, in, no, talap, jerbal. Nan, bar, ino, kualak, kile, ragi, ru, kap, kri, ragi, ru, chiner, um, chemer, chen, ik, liza, ku, kachiju, uh, ilo, majel, in, em, kodi, iligun, majel, in. Kile, kile, leadership, an, island, in, leroy, uh, air, island, in, mayor, uh, an, island, in, nambal, la, di, chay, yunan, kile, se, kud, bad, kap, rem, jero, komolol, ler, pan, chamlak, komolol, ler, gan, chibang, kain, ami, men, ngan, kame, deng, uh, armijin, molol, uh. Em, uh, chen, olap, ngan, leroy, uh, Irojeru, uh, lejala, uh, cap, Irojeru, man, uh, em, olip, armijin, molol, uh, mayor, council. Mol, Speaker, chilu, ak, kachiduk, ik, gar, kogujutuk, chibon, in, um, come on, gan, am, gal, leto, chirigar, ru, yan, ngan, kogatub, konono, go, iman, du, chun, eh, agal, ilo, ran, innee. Em, kachidug, uh, kain, kajuan, isilat, ECT. Em, kar, ngan, melal, uh, rar, dage, ngan, ipay, cheni, pens, step, ekar, pok, chigin, ilo, chino, jerbal, ilo, chab, tam, bar, um, ro, ran. Chun, September twenty-two, uh, melal, in, September twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, eh, kiya, bello, January twenty-five. Kemjan, pok, chigin, ligyo, uh, enang, turunla, ligyo, uh, chilu, uh. Em, ik, komolol, minister, komolol, uh, may, romul, chilu, ran, in, uh, magat, uh, timi, gai, ngan, chagana, yeah, uh, no, taur, um, molol, uh, ngan, air, polak, jerbal, gin, ro, run, ngan, ajur, uh. Choga, kachidug, uh, eh, chet, kachiduk, uh, me, ik, gar, pak, kachiduk, man, takot, ajur, uh, rain, me, eh, jaga, balal, me, er, uh, braj, jep, gi, ilo, jebal, uh, chijino. Ren, marong, ke, pugair, chibang, elang, ke, chibang, uh, marong, tal, ngan, ir, uh, ajur, uh, rain, uh, uh, eligible, lo, an, uh, gain, chilu, uh, uh, program, uh. Right, kachidug, uh, marong, ke, elang, chibang, uh, tar, ngan, ir, uh, kiyo, uh, eligun, chilu, uh, em, je, chen, marong, qualify. Kachidug, uh, kain, gar, uh, Mr. Speaker, eh, gichien, pay, ben, ato, uh, pen, career, uh, ilo, island, uh, em, riz, monon, uh, pokon, air, ilo, jerbal, gan, eh, me, ngan, koman, one, maandak, gichien, intro, burn, worship, um, we, we, ngan, eh, ngan, le, maandak, ay, elang, ke, ilang, la, island, ke. Uh, ik, gar, kame, lal, uh, gier, gan, chun, million, kar, eh, pan, ilo, pach, na, kanya, kachin, mo, jelo, Nidijalay. Kachiduk, kachidug, uh, in, eh, no, ngay, jerbal, ele, nan, jerbal, ew, gan, melal, uh, chamarong, la, lean, melal, uh, ga, gip, chen, pok, kilen, pay, chara, malak, kar, uh, rain, ilo, air, or, air, eh, tanak, kap, katabar, ngan, koman, uh, island, uh, kar, uh, ru, ilo, island, uh, ran, pach, one, maandak, jan, chong, kan, uh, ber, uh, rainin. Em, hel, gata, Speaker, kachidug, uh, uh, kiyo, chibong, modaj, uh, uh, magat, tok, chun, uh, uh, constitute, uh, eh, kola, tonga, uh, register, uh, concern, buroma, jep, uh, itako, minister, uh, chigin, Esmoor, komolol, uh, President, ina, be, uh, Rainwan Cabinet. Kola, tonga, uh, ilo, ran, innee, chun, Nidijin, ajur, rujugul, in, middle school, uh, emergency, uh, kaga, ngan, eh, but, uh. Em, rar, kogel, beli, kogel, beli, uh, lal, uh, elang, jerbal, choraini, ne, uh, mayor, uh, uh, magat, uh, rad, um, chun, awa. Em, ralak, kar, bat, tak, uh, uh, eh, jadal, uh, tal, er, uch, chibun, uh, 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 rainin, rujar, ngajaki, kiyo, rujar, ngajaki, kana, uh, ber, um, mayir. Uh, right, kachiduk, gar, kachidug, uh, minister, minister, uh, bay, chep, walak, chigidug, uh, dage, uh, uh, tak, uh, uh, ran, uh, chep, nih, 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 kip, chen, chen, kommani, we, we, uh, me, uh, chep, uh, ma, chen, lelak, chep, we, we, uh, ngan, kajeb, uh. Armijerin, chit, chep, chal, uh, 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 ay, ri, chiririg, man, in, par, kachidug, uh, pen, cabinet, in, come, uh, chuj, um, uh, la, lean, uh, we, we, in. Per Katchidigpen cabinetin koman chowijemak, lalemak WWNin. Em kamol, karayogar kolewei, ekanejroonge dagekikin paamlin rojroonge dare. Elen chabro, chidang chutanaro. Komol, Mr. Speaker.
Chidwey, AWI nayro, chibin garkatar.
Chidwadungtwey, wey, chidwadungtwey, chidwadungtwey. Ramakar kamenin, idox poogar, chidwadungtwey. Ramakar kamenin, ayidox poogar, chidwadungtwey. Karangan, karayogar, chidwadungtwey. Ramakar kamenin, ayidox poogar, chidwadungtwey. Ayidox, chidwadungtwey. Idox sidwotwey, idox sidwotwey, ramakar kamenin, idox poogar, chidwadungtwey.
Man cabinetet roonge dagehot, rejor baliben ministero talagan. Inaj kilogyo, Senator Tony Isaiah.
Komol, Mr. Speaker, em per chunalen. Kamolulim, yagoya olip. Motajenay kalak, katchidaka, Mr. Speaker. Ganan per chunalen, elijin, kowdey jau. Keen karwo, ganaan lealak, chunainnanin kile, ida orin lelaptada, chunian merroare. Ilu meran aluk, iluan mononontan rojagi, agaluji, kuelak keen anidijalae. Kuijoi idoglimon, em kanani tok, nilale, kapkijiganewei, ekane glap melale, ilu kapkijiganey. Yawek, mer? Ilamgarko bato. Keen karwo, Mr. Speaker, ilorano inni. Korpaake, ewujuwet pevan kamol, tagoy harpa, igetjen yaagorowet kalae. Em imanmejaye, imononoley waj, amiro priden no kabi. Em ngakomorran chiringan ministerin borren, padmelale em roonge dage. Em chujen kaman kachimewo, ngamolaga chitkala, kabijarak. Ayri ranek kolayak. Angamolaga chitkala, ekorren, kamelalekibey. Chunian jonran, iluan pek aramijilu ar, pachitchep kala, ligranek kolayake, ramron manir. We, peskal, chojimlealak, yarkala inni. Kyar, itpojen, ngirirelak, hefytabitey, yidam kala, ilu kowdau. Motajenay, awicher lelak, imanmejanchay jogon wordaren. Mr. Speaker, katchidaka, keen kajwen. Em merong, chilutri, kageenkeen, akeneke, edilatmewiran armijchi. Emre yavonono. Rar Charval, ngaluyzake, ewujuwangan. Enrayogetjen pevan ladakam WWN kochet, em rar Charval elginawa. Ngan reinin rechangan pok, kalaeguan, awakwair. Reininet, reininkala, agayjau. Kyar yarong, kebarworjung spagerren, ngan rorarudelak, chetjen kala. Arayber, runge, icelak, air, kala, awakwar, rar Charval. Katchidaka inkiyo. Tainojake, degar cepek, akalaawakan armijerin, em rar Charval, ngaluyzakeen renai. Keen karwojay iluan katchidiginu, Mr. Speaker, ilu yoyelak. Aredal, ponet, akajmae, ralidungulawa, ngan rejarbar rankeen, ilu krimajio. Emkarjul minin kamolol, em chiba ngalap, nganir. Ilu krimajio, retjerongdogege, icelak. Em chinbat, em merongke dal, melalela, idog melale. Idoge icelak, akarowil ilu krimajio, lak. Komol, Mr. Speaker, inaj pajarakjinak, ngekpaloab, ngayakar, komolot.
Man komol, Mr. Senator, inaj lehngan yu kiyo, Minister J. Casper Jr.
Komol, Mr. Speaker, perodala onkaudich, olip. Lo chupugunin reinin, ganaan na, atreje katchidawewo chen senatorin udich, chen malolap. Igichien, retro payment, ngan ajuriromerar falof, chen ECD program. Oraday gnan, kalaki, elababor inebada we, armijin bigin, edan biginni, ilu keli. Rajgabudanijbaranalo, programen ECD. Katchidigin arwor, wali godagalo sessione olak. Ievjar, kachiongcharbalipen ECD programo. Em, ar, edalipen funders, donors, romer, ledo chen, ngan igichien programu inu. Arkalikarake, icelak retro payment, ngan reinme, rajutalake chen ECD program. Unfortunately, gnan, you know, cholagamburraga, eworromi chicharbalipen, chen again me, rajidonganailinkin. Aga, good newsge, edan igichien ECD, keneke melalegeen, rebere chen em chamelelega. Eni jilabolak allotment ngan ECD program. Im eni jilabolak ngan outer island. So that's the good news me, egarutojim minin. So reneme, outer island mirarudela. Retchimero retro, padab armijin outer island me wunidjir. Eni jilabolak edan payment ganair. Chen armijerin me mujer kariri, register enot, ilo center geen, majuro im ibay. Igichien katchidawewo, chen senatorin udich chen namu, ken, rejarbar rollo registrar. Edan concern, al concern, keneke uvijen edpryumun, em OCA. Iev, edoam, kano nogal. Em kameangarbar kano nogal, gielu cabinet, lorano inni. Isu nyarpolamodan ngan mesa, romerajad ministry, enray, registration. Iev, enodaabai, mujaragi raise it up, keyangan cabinet. Im cabinet made the decision, kadalabo mesa in charbalimini. Im roldogu, mledo chunwagalotayje, next cabinet meeting. So, enginejedan wagui merong lewaj kia, igichien armijerin ido registrar. Icelak katchidaki, ganaan kalaeki reinmeracharval. Nokucharval, keyeneni kalaikwe. Aga, timely, WWN chen again, earmark, ibulgein, minchijewi lurujaga, motajenar kajarbal chen again. Wenchimayar kajarbal chen again. Komol, Mr. Speaker.
Komol, Mr. Minister, Senator Bruce Tanet. Falow bidu. Falowab ngan wago kia, Senator Bruce.
Komol, Speaker, perodalo, midatudon kowdey dewa. Chigin bebeen kapailinkin. Mulan minister, mulan minister gan wagalamman. Ilu kalamalaga daleme, no chail lipiain, kainkeen. Itay ilolamlagalebentukunu chuan ngan ajuririnijid. Len elima godud menengi, merong lewaj katchidigin nganipam. Em merongke nalay, chetane ajurimi rarudelak, ilo malolap, ilu biginni. Pechal nalamak, takajang nitijalae, merong chidang. Pe ngan ergey ban kaprumijwet, ngaptada ajuririn me rarilajebal ngan. Enleme programne, lerinke olivian kajanglul nitijalae. Kajang edba, kajang kamanpein aman ngan olip, intukunu chuan ngan majuli. Icelak ukutajin henreale, areangba, enlakala chonalkatan ngan olipin majuli. Em merongke, chetemergetala chidwena panay. Rorarudelamak, kajang patkanalotakagelun nitijalae. Im konan nitijalae, lealak, chalat, chalat, chalat. Katchidak, ilo kowdey. Komol, Speaker.
Komol, Mr. Senator, inaj, Senator Momotaro, paloab nanai igichien. Igichien. Oh, ECD. Ke, onmalo, onmalo omut.
Komol, Komol Speaker. Ayidogudin, lidochet melale igichien garkatchidungan. Senator Pilimon, igichien, chenin lonawan karay, karaypan. Em, emul, ewarchuan billion megar, pachitodlanijyuna, eychanendru tok. Iyoga, kubikwunmalo, otamlelak, chen, chen garchenome, taiwanaletok. Em, emjajchilunlor ripoto nganee. Ilu mul, icelakjen, maloelak. Ekaran, epoyantitiripote. Keneke, epalawijan ngan chaperewot. Eychanen galukulanga, karajan monolap, arudokome plai. Ayelajen, enanganolip, neighboringalan, ayalan ngan eywat. Eywat tarinin chubukichimjuan karay, ilu wartijem payo, rar merongin epogolon. Em eywat ninety-two active. Em ikpelakot, chijan ngan epogolon. Em chamrono mul kometok, kararoyan monolap. Em ikkeemim, ngayar. Senator Puruit, teriobigar, chijetolak, chenijian, rolem charval lubudumi. Arudokchet, keryenreeruguan chen, maloelak. Em yar dalam kamanowar nejipairan, ngayar kamelelegan, karaypan. Eycha, icelak nar, idog, ngan uviyo. Yawek, melaleuin, komol.
Komol, Madam Chair President. Kilogyo, Minister Paul.
Komol, good morning, per chunalen kamolul, kanam kilagjero. Ayidogonan wag, igichien katchidawewo, chen senatoro chen namu, igichien accessawa. Em, idoge yaricelak, kala ido yoin, agayorot, kala ngan, akarwor yoyelak, krimajolak. Mo tata, Speaker, nganot, rapijow tawuncarbalim, lore kageenwaan nitijalaga, keyenin. Ilo appropriation akne, iyonginejyomi chijelore igichien, an nitijalakechimajimaniguan armij. Imit, ikronodakani yoin. Ievwey, accessawa, yarjep chuan linea idamo mehar, pachitido. Ilo yoy, yoy, ilo pachitana niyoin, icelaga yarjepar pachitelo par yoyelak. Em, accessawa dey chuan, awakomir in access of two hundred and eight hours, ngan chuan rejarval. Em, unanwar accessawa, keneke, keyenoe, kilege, dejujin rejarbar roanren per. Pugi vacation awakin airwey, renjep, renaudilujigin charval. Imitjep, lukunmolijep chuan, application ngan payawdi minigin. This is, is, on a case by case, in perrypyontijinohan cabinet. Imit, kajangkanujin melalege, iluar lore kageenome nitijalayrpeje. Chijejujin lore tagome, nitijalainrpeje igichien, edan expenditurean government. Imit iluan garjep budget, icelak chuan applicationome, chijejujin gallore. Ngan arkalaeki miniginwey, echep belop budget. Aga lukun, itama, kuninarakan, merongkar kalajen, yoholak, keneke, pelincharbari lololo, remenakanariwa. Unused fundam menakanai. Mit, itama, iyalaake, tijijinohan cabinet, ilo yoin. Ievwey, nganareng chetey chuan presidentso me, yakelwey chen, encourage rejarbar wararren. Pugi vacation awakwair, borren. Go on leave borren merongin, refresh, retool, recharge, borren labaroldoke, bor. Productive level wair, borwalinglok. Em, borren not, arpar honestly charging awakin, minijep tonganchigin charval. Majed, pachitpegejen, chen actually charging awakin. Imit, keyenin ar, cabinetar kamanajon tijijin perrypyontkano noganwey. Rejarbar rome, redperilo, merit, ngijodonganalotim yen. Miniginme, keyen echep charval, red, ewujbelojigin charvalo. Kainwan, nojero waran, takdoro waran, plizman rom, kumikomir, rapijaineman. Keyeninar, onmalakotam bagepelin, ngakajang ngakaman. Kala accessawa, kanaer garjep kajarbal awain, pegejenkeen air. Ekenke, rar four zero borrenjep. Pokpegejenkeen air, kenerojejujin ripotenganchigin charval. Ngakajangyong, roonge dage, edan, announcementanakanan public service commissiono, edan pa. Ili lorano idju, wangchongok, edan waralte, icelakan keyen charval idjo. Romer red require ripotenganchigin charval, rajegujinalanganchigin charvalo. Ngem, kajang calawon rein, essential service reinme, chuplizman, nojemchiginme. Em, keyenin edba, cabinetin edba pelin, ngan, ngan kariglok. Kalamalagijinige, ngayjep kajarval, awain pegejenkeen, ngay kokon ngan chamlonguniyoin, ngay pok accessawa, in access of two hundred and eight. Mo tata, echep chuan expenditureome keyenakar, entispeidiya pachitilo, fiscal yoin. Nokunejale, pachitana two thousand fiscal yoin, fiscal yolak, racharjep pachitewaleben, expenditure geen. Ijoteke, cabinet ilo teriogo, agar, ex discretione waran, kormalakotam. Kamane, tijijininwey, kalaeki accessawakin. Imit, chetkeen WWN cabinetin, chetkeen discipline cabineto dejujinbar. Ins, en, digitiwey chen, sentan message ngan rejarbar warake. Ngay aurwey, enwor, chen, enworjen pegejen, kujejujin pahawakin em kapkiji. Unanwar awardegan kapkijiwey, kajarmij dejujinbar kapkiji. Imit, unenan gar cabinet gar kamanajon tijijinobe, icelak, kamanij, pay accessawakin e ngan reinme. Recep, recem merongin em magichien, chigin charvalwair, keneke, require, borren ripotenganchigin charval. Waagui, Mr. Speaker, komol.
Yawek, kajane, kajikakijidik. Yajikakijigiyo moda. Awarjion alen ya wai. An olip armijin majal, rorajrojaga, telagun kuilawin. Iduki jalay, awarjepelak, ngan mejadudu. Em, elugina gar kakkijiyo. Ewarjujan ruwela gar. Kanan pokonan ilu followup. Em, nganaj kilo kio. Senator inudich, namo. Amyenin ilu kawdeich.
Komol Mr Speaker. Mr Speaker, morajina inaj kala, kalmalagajane. Andri beberin matay, kanan perkejuna alen kala kawde, nalale. Olip. Perenot komolul, kanan melale koraman. Igijen kajjidakoba kia, melale, lanai. Kijjasa awa, woi tijijinewan, pele celak, pajtepajt. Kien minin Mr Speaker, ilu kawde. Kalmalagajane kia, andri beberin. Woi, niti jalayin anailingkien. In kakkiji may, mandre chungulawa chipung. Pebeuwin perkejuna alen, abisinuwio, ngan olip.
Manewarjujan, bebe kajwurjana. Woi niti jalayin, in kakkiji may, ranewijju. Roraj. Em motajina ar intetini, mojini. Jen ekaralog ngan chairman rongewor kajjalajen. Chairman daynar, ilu kawdeich. Iklo kio Chairman Wilbur Ainie, amyenin.
Komol la Mr Speaker, perodalo kawde, ikapcolopu ngan, duwela wuri, laporkarmi lok, airpelaarmin. Aga, ikran, yedugu jirika. Melale, ngan romer yaar kajjalangan erinai, igijen. Memberona Kamidihan ESA. Ngan gar kuilawaran, ngan gar kamanlo reinin. Jen ut, chungulume rajgoperwalo duk kia chipung. Langeman, imaronkarmi lok, kuilawin araman ngan wiginlal wanjie, chungulawa chipung. Jojim, magikalantakan ami Kamidihan ESA. Nganareng kijarwaliya, bilwo ngan limantek, ngan kagejanku igijen ECD. Jen iparkagejmu dulu wiginlal, kolopu ngan, chungujin ukutajin. Kawde ya dalap, komol Mr Speaker.
Komolata Mr Chairman. Wargaworjen Chairman Rojet. Wela ngaj celak. Rorajerre, woi niti jalayan kakkiji may, chungulawat mandre. Ijwijum bait. Enjujan. Ken minin niti jalayin ikakkiji may mandre. Nah, cerammona olip ilawigane.
Edz reinin, kamak, ekaranikin kallem. Im ranen, chijijin kuilakon niti jalayo, an armijinailingkien. Im enotamronyake. Ke, bebeu ekajur tata, ngukarongi kiajen, ruwelaure. Woi niti jalayan kakkiji may ranen mandre, chungul awa chipung, ranen mandre. Ewek, ilodan, legajon chamajie, alazajen entie, kapi savenhebi. Ken moronit, ligutajalgenijij, ilu niti jalay. Em, nijkewalak kia ngan Control Ministerio. Komol Christina, ceraman.